That would be because my microphone was not on.
Uh, okay. Were you asking if I could hear you?
Okay, it's five thirty. I'll call the meeting to order. I'd like to start by acknowledging that this meeting is held on the traditional territory of the Saikos First Nation, on whose lands we live, work and play. Uh, you have an agenda circulated. Would somebody like to move adoption? I'll take the other one as a second there. All in favor? Carry. We have select standing committee minutes, three point one. We have the housing committee minutes. Somebody like to move adoption? Any business coming out of that? Seeing none, all in favor? Carry. Um, we have three point two. Isn't an action item coming out of the environment committee, uh, meeting from Thursday? Yeah. It's the radon testing. Okay. Would somebody like to move adoption? Second or?
Second.
All in favor? Carry. Okay, quarterly progress report. Are you going to speak to this, Marcus? Okay.
Yeah, thank you, worship. So these are the first quarterly report for the council strategic priorities. Uh, there are five priorities. And the first one is the organizational development and sustainability. And under that one, at at this moment, we have four positions already posted and another one is coming, total five vacancies available. And second point is economic diversification. The visitors guide and tourism map plan, both are almost ready. So we'll be posting that one once it is finalized. Active living, um, under that one, active transportation plan is already ready. And the complete community's plan is in the process. So we have a consultant who will be working soon. And fourth one is the community engagement. We are in the process of establishing a community-wide public service announcement system. And we'll be putting as much more information on our website about the departments and our activities for transparency. And last one is the service excellence. Our department heads did a very good job in terms of preparation of the service level. So that one is done. Uh, if you have any question specific on the spreadsheet, I can answer. Otherwise, thank you.
Hey, anybody have any questions for CEO Robin? That's the laws again.
All right. Thank you. I I just had a couple of questions and and the first one is, what do the percentages mean under uh, the staffing type or the staffing category? What do the percentage or percentages mean relative to hiring like so? I I'm not understanding what twenty-five percent means is that just getting, yeah, so you explain it, please.
Yeah, thank you. I think Rondell would be the right person to answer that.
Okay.
In terms of overall percentages.
Sorry. Thank you. Uh, so the percentages are, uh, I think those, uh, are where at twenty-five percent. Yeah, I'm not mistaken. Uh, so they're posted. So we're
That's what posting means.
Exactly.
Okay, good.
And then we'll, as we move along, it'll be fifty percent for interviewing that type of thing.
Okay, so it's just, it would be good. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any other questions? No? Okay, good. That was a good, well-laid-out report. Thank you. Uh, moving on to four point two, um, department quarterly reports. So we will go through them in, uh, the order in the agenda. So we'll start with building and bylaw.
Um, so the department's got working on thirty-six open building permits right now. Seven permit applications, two stop works and seven bylaw complaints. The bylaw complaints are be are harder to close because we currently don't have a ticking bylaw. So it's hard to follow through on that. We're overseeing the Hargrave subdivision, which everything will be completed except the paving, which will be done in the spring. And then they'll be applying for building permits. And that's kind of it for me.
Why don't we, we'll do questions as we go along because then we're not trying to remember them by the time we get to the end of the ports. So any, uh, any questions for manager Robertson? I'll maybe make a comment. Oh, for councillor Frankel, go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. Um, Ben, just, um, just to confirm that that project up here is just, it's complete all the infrastructures in. And, um, and they're going to pave in the spring. Um, are they finished on site now for the winter?
No, they're still doing testing. Of all the, uh, underground utilities.
Okay, so we haven't They haven't hooked up the, uh, the, uh, this water sewer yet, have they, or have they? Or is that what they're testing? Sorry.
Tomorrow.
Thanks, Ben.
Awesome. Anything else? I just got a comment that thirty-six open building permits is very exciting.
Yeah.
No, but still, it's, we'll take good news, right? Oh, yeah?
One of them's a new house.
Right on. So that's good. Okay, thank you very much. Hey, community services is up next.
All right. So here is my quarterly department report and I was directed to kind of concentrate on three things that I was working on uh, through this, the last three months. So some of the things that have happened, um, throughout the last three months is we are working on a new app called Rec Times. And so it's a new it's a new app that we're going to be able to actually put out to the public so people can actually see what's going on at the arena, which is going to be huge for booking. Um, for, um, just for even weekly user groups that are looking for what's available during times. One of my biggest things that keeps me on my toes is they'll call and say, what's available on this day, what's available on this day? And it's so time consuming for me to get on there and be like, okay, this, 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 this is available. Whereas now they can just go see what's available and book it. So we actually had a meeting today about Rec Times because we ran into, how are we going to do this? How are we going to implement this? Who's going to, how is, you know, regular user groups going to pay? What is going to be the best way to do this? We are actually going to keep everything the same. So nothing has changed. So when it comes to allocating, who gets what time, we're going by the agreement. I have not changed anything. So when staff comes forward and they're like, oh, how does this going to work? The same way. So what we've planned and what come out of the meeting today that'll work for Margaret's staff and my staff is when a user group wants to book something, they're going to book it the same way they normally do. They're going to come in, we're going to book it. It's still going to save us time. Um, from, you know, we're still going to give a monthly a monthly sheet to finance so that they know what's going on. So everything is running the same. So any questions about that, please let me know if you have any questions about that at the end. The other thing we've been working on is just setting up, you know, uh, just getting ready for ice in startup. We had a couple of things that happened. That's why I mentioned them in here. We had, uh, our dehumidifier, some of the components. The compressor wasn't working, so I mentioned that in my report. And then I kind of gave you just, you know, our weekly, what we've been doing with Rec Time. So you guys can understand exactly what's behind and what we're all doing and how it's all kind of unraveling as we go through it. Um, and then I also wanted to just talk about some of the events from August to December. So some of the big things that I wanted to really put in when I write down, you know, Canada Day, who's it organized by? Why we're not putting it on our site. So there's certain, certain events that are not organized by the D O V. So we're not going to put those on our website. It's extra work for staff. And I'm open to doing it if council prefers us to put it on our website, but that's why you'll see behind all of the events, whether it's organized by a community group or whether it's organized by a D O V. Okay, and if it's organized by the D O V, the D O V is doing everything pretty much. If it's not, it's just a matter of sometimes Gary's setting up a stage for them. But we still have to have it in our system. So we're all working together to make sure that we're all on the same page with any of the things that have to get done. And then staff has just been working on just getting ready for, you know, um, winter season and, um, looking into, you know, our stats and our holiday stats and getting those prepared. So when we do get busy, they're just done up and we can send them out. So, yeah, there's my department report. Let me know if you guys have any questions.
Sounds really good. Any questions? So go ahead.
Thanks, Heidi. This was great. Uh, on the, the back of the, um, of your report, you talked about, uh, some of the, uh, stuff that happened at the museum and and the number of people from all around the world that came to view.
Isn't that awesome?
Site and stuff. And then there's some really outstanding comments back from the public and from these tourists. Now, the only question I had was, uh, was there any negative comments that were received at all? There's something that we could take back and that's something that we could work on.
I didn't want to concentrate on anything that I found negative. I've only asked staff to bring out the positive. But this is out of our book. So if you ever want to go have a look, we have a login book for anybody that comes in, you're more than welcome. We try to take any of the feedback that's negative, staff will immediately tell me. So we can have a team meeting and figure out what's the best way to move forward to make sure that we don't have any more negative comments.
Great. Super. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Heidi.
Yep.
Um, I just had a, a question about the rec time. So rec time. So you will be meeting with user groups in this summer like you usually do to just set up.
Yes. So I had actually the user meeting in April. And the reason for this is so that those user groups are ready for September. Because by the time September rolls around, ice is in in two weeks and it doesn't give me enough time to set everything up so that we're ready, right?
Yeah.
And so they had that meeting early and, um, I voiced to them that Rex Times, you know, we're looking into this. And once we get, you know, all the hiccups out, it will be posted live. And then from there, we'll explain in detail how you go about booking stuff.
But they still have to come in and book the same.
No, they can just email and say, I see this time is available. Please book it.
And that's how they do it. Okay. And the other question I had regarding booking, is there a priority? So I understand, um, uh, for example, on Sundays, the muckers have nice time. Um, however, and, and, you know, eighty percent of the time, it's not an issue. But if there's a hockey tournament in town, that block of time is like, is there, how does that work?
So what I've told user groups is muckers is an adult group. And they book every Sunday from ten to eleven. So muckers no longer are on Friday nights. So if they need extra time, I've asked user groups, especially minor hockey, to make sure that we use, you know, the Friday nights, the Saturday nights, the Sundays. And if we can't fit everybody in that tournament, muckers are more than willing to move. We found, oh, absolutely. It's just last year, we moved them so much it wasn't necessary. So I'm just asking user groups to look at Rec Times, figure out what they can do to accommodate having that group there because they lost a lot of people in that group. So we just want to try to work together.
Yeah, so there is a priority.
Oh, there is a priority. Yep, for sure.
That is my question.
Yep, yep.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yep. Any more questions?
Good. Anyone else? Thanks. That was a very thorough report, Heidi. Okay, corporate services.
Okay, so I've never had to do one of these before. So there you go. So, um, the top, the ones that I'm working on now, as you can see in the list, are leases. The airport one, a hangar is done. Uh, working on a few others coming up, uh, finishing up all the U B C M. I just finished, um, writing up the notes from the minister meetings today. Uh, a lot of committee works, work, even though we have another committee. So we have accessibility, housing and environment. They're meeting once a month. So it's three agendas, three sets of minutes. Uh, we have a few planning applications in that are ongoing, uh, subdivisions, a commercial development permit, a zoning and O C P, uh, amendment application. And so then also attached is the council resolution tracker, the in-progress and the complete one. I just wanted to mention the one from August fourteenth, the grant application for the Redmond Wetlands, that's complete. And then the one for the tea hangar from last May. Um, one point eight million is not correct. It is actually five thirty-five, five hundred, so five hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred for limited development, which is a free draining lot. And full development of off-site and service to the lot is nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So that number, one point eight million is not correct. Uh, but that one is still ongoing. And that's all. If you have any questions?
Should anybody? Just a real, uh, quick one. Um, the, the May twenty-fourth foundry could probably be considered complete now, right?
Yeah, that I made this up.
I know, I know.
So yes, I will mark that one complete as well. Sure.
Looks, looks great. Okay, finance.
So finance is working on the permissive tax exemption bylaw, which is due by October thirty-first. I'll be coming to the next regular council meeting for adoption. Um, we're working on beginning to compile information for year-end audit and getting things organized for that, trying to get that ahead of time. I'm working on setting up the draft budget. And once I receive information, I'll start inputting it into the budget. Uh, we, Heidi and I, or Director of Community Services and I, have been working on the welcome and tour, welcome guide and tourism plan. I think we only have a few little pieces left for the welcome guide and then we'll have a draft completed for that. It shouldn't be too long. The tourism plan, I was told I should have a draft this week. So hopefully I'll be able to review a draft of the tourism plan and it should be along shortly as well. Uh, financials, all of our, uh, expenditures are in line with the previous year's expenditures. Nothing is drastic. Uh, the only thing I would point out is the community forest revenue is very low for this year. So.
Thanks, Margaret. Uh, so any idea, have they not started any logging operations? Do we know?
So I talked with Michael at Sinclair and he said that Mark was checking in on the F S P and that they are still reviewing the F S P renewals. So nothing is happening until they get that finalized. So I've asked them if there was some way they could nudge them or something.
Or snudge somebody.
Yeah.
That would be with the local officer. Okay, councillor Frankel.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. Um, maybe Margaret and Dave, um, the issue seems to be that they were shut down for so long, they brought a lot of wood in last winter. So that would be the update that we'd want, uh, when, you know, uh, it affects us ultimately and what we're trying to achieve. Um, but if they've gone down to one shift, the rumor is that there's enough wood in that log yard right now that they could maintain what they have. So it'd be good to find out it, when the start date would be because that's, they don't need to log. I've heard that some of the logging contractors have moved to different operations. So if we could add that to the ask would be great.
I will do that and as soon as I know, I can let council know.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Grant and aid starting to roll in?
I have received one application and I have let Willie know to send out another reminder on Facebook. So for everyone who might be watching this meeting, grant applications, grant and aid applications are due by October thirty-first. So.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, we will move on. Uh, September checklist, was that part of your report or was that, was that separate? I'm just looking on here.
It's just the listing that I put on every month for checks. If there are any questions.
Might as well do it now. It's, they'll get it done in order then. Any questions on the checklist? Silence. Good. Okay, fire department.
So thank you. Uh, so this is my first time, um, doing a quarterly report. So you can just tell me to, uh, if I get cut off here, tell me to shorten it up. Uh, so the first thing I, I wanted to highlight for, for the, uh, seven items here. Um, the U B C M Fire Smart Grant has been submitted and we're just waiting a response from U B C M. Uh, this would foremost, uh, provide a coordinator position for up to three years. Uh, first year is under this grant and then two additional years is, um, is what they're saying that we can apply for under next year's grant. So this, um, would be able to decrease risks under communities by following the fire smart principles. Uh, and because it's all funded a hundred percent under the U B C M granting, uh, there would be very minimal impact to our taxpayers. So it's one of those things where we can, if we can mitigate risk and use some provincial funding. I think there's a lot of bonuses in it for us and, uh, not just for us collectively, but us as a fire department, just to help coordinate that. Um, we can use eighty percent of their time strictly for fire smart activities. And there's twenty percent of the time that we're allowed to be flexible, giving them other duties. So whether that be helping me with training or whatnot. So it's quite, quite generous and I'm hopeful that, um, that we've written a pretty strong application for that.
Awesome.
The next item is firefighter recruitment. Um, we've been very successful. We've recruited seven additional members. Uh, and there's more people that are still dropping off applications. So we've gone from a ongoing recruitment style to one intake a year and potentially two if we saw numbers dip. So with that, we're able to, um, get people in into a cohort sort of model. So that they're all training the same items at the same time. That's easier for us as a training staff to, to get them on board in that way. Um, and so that, yeah, we were at twenty-seven and now adding seven, we're at thirty-four. And our guidelines give us up to thirty-five and that, at the same time, there's no need to really push that number. Um, you know, if we lose a few just from retirement or whatnot, um, work-life balances, what, what have you, then that, that would be okay and we could do another intake in the spring. But, um, yeah, just having the number of firefighters up to this much is, is a comfortable place to be and pretty happy about that. Um, I'm going to jump down to firefighter training. This, of course, is, is the main, um, lynchpin or the, the main key point to getting all those firefighters engaged and, and sticking around. So, um, with that, there's a internal pressure to keep them around and keep it active, keep all those things positive. Uh, but there's also external factors such as the Office of the Fire Commissioner. They've put out new guidelines for us to meet, um, expanding on, uh, exterior attack, expanding on team lead positions, expanding on emergency vehicle operator and apparatus operator. So there's a lot of more criteria that we have to meet. And with that, we're, we're strategizing that a bit. Um, but just wanted to put it into my report, saying that this is one thing that we're really trying to embrace and they have to be in place by March twenty twenty-four. Um, we're into the position right now where we've linked in with Northern Hands-on Training or Northern Hot. They're a group of individuals out of Prince George that have come out, they've interacted with us. We've had, come up with a bit of a strategy as to what we can do for twenty twenty-three. And then we've got some plans for twenty twenty-four to, to get some of those big ticket items where we need, uh, you know, minimum eight hours, but more like sixteen hours. So a whole weekend just to dedicate. Uh, we're doing, um, respectful entry and forcible entry this month. We're moving into all things ladder. Uh, so whether we're fighting a fire from a ladder or doing ladder rescues, it's going to be taught by these individuals and looking at their C V's, they're very, very knowledgeable and they're ready to, ready to jump in. They're impressed with our department as it is and they understand what our needs are. Another piece of the firefighting is we have, um, uh, first aid, standard first aid training coming up um, in November and that's going to be one of those things where we've really zeroed in on standard first aid versus any sort of level one, um, you know, meeting O F A requirements. Plus, uh, a huge piece of just really practical knowledge. So it's really identified as one of those things that we need to, to have. Uh, not as the focal point for public. Uh, we haven't gone there in the past. And, but it's really about keeping our fellow firefighters safe. It's a risky situation. And, um, and we're just wanting to make sure that we have the capacity to deal with, uh, with rescuing our own firefighters. All right, um, if we look at fire prevention, last week was fire prevention week and it's one of those places where we can't say enough about it. We've had some tragedy and, uh, some injuries in the last week locally. And, um, it's really, I put a lot of heart and soul into that. It's, it's one of those things where we get to go into classrooms. Grade threes and fours is our target audience. It's kind of that sweet spot where we can start talking to them about what is it like to phone nine-one-one? You know, how do, how do you do it? Does everybody here know their address? And we just have a good conversation about that. And, you know, I've gotten into, um, almost every school in the, in the town. And, uh, the only one that wasn't able to RSVP is Sing of View and I wanted to reach out to them and make sure. We, we put an invitation out to all schools, but, um, they weren't able to join us for that. Uh, and then with that, it also spurs more conversation. You can tell them, hey, we're having an open house. Our whole open house last weekend. Um, thank you, Tom, for, councillor Tom, for coming to visit us, sir. Um, yeah, and, uh, and it was a case where I was expecting fifty or sixty. I was hoping for a hundred and I actually got a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty, maybe. You know, you start losing track, but once you start looking at going back to the store after you go through a hundred hot dogs, you're like, okay, what, what else can we do? We gotta, we gotta make sure that we don't run out. That's, uh, as a, one of my fears of organizing an event. You know, the, the food's got to bring, uh, bring our residents in and, um, you know, that sort of thing. So just having all those programs set up in the, in the open house, uh, really interactive, lots of fun times. Uh, fires, fire extinguisher simulation, you get the jaws of life. You get B C wildfire joining us, doing that whole inter-agency piece. And of course, B C ambulance was there to join us. So, um, pretty proud of my guys. They look like they're having probably as much fun or maybe more fun as the members of the public. So we're building on that and also looking at the pumpkin walk. How do we get that fire smart messaging over there? How do we get that fire prevention piece out there? So, um, that's, uh, that's about all I, I have to report on today. And if you have any questions?
Go ahead, councillor Ballmer.
Now, so I wanted to thank you for that on Saturday. It was great and it was good to see people come out to it. My quick question is kind of off the cuff. I, I just want to know how long they had to work on that to get such a cool name as Northern Hot.
Yeah. Uh, we, we do call them the hot guys. So, uh, I don't know if that's, we're, we're talking in firm terms of fire and temperature, of course, but yeah, yeah.
Rhonda's sweating over there. No, no, that, that, that you're harassing somebody is what I was thinking.
Again, oh, I thought just for, from the temperature.
No. Um, good. Any other questions for the fire chief? Glad to entertain you, councillor Frankel. Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. That was great. Public Works.
A lot of firsts tonight. Oh, a lot of firsts obviously tonight. Um, so, uh, quite a few different things, uh, going through. The public work staff is responsible for a broad number of, uh, expertises, obviously, uh, that we go through with, uh, constructing things such as the, uh, the playground, putting that all together, the electrical stuff, all the excavations and the regular maintenance of our, um, sewer system and the water system, which is a daily ongoing thing. Um, with the sewer, uh, sanitary, uh, main repairs have actually commenced today. North Star, uh, or Northern Lights actually commenced today with that up in the, uh, Vanderview area. And, uh, there's a list that they're starting on the first phases. Special projects doing the signage for their Riverside, uh, interpreted trail. I don't know if any of you have seen those yet or not. Um, I think they've turned out very well. The, just the setting that they're in, it seems to be the right spots too. So there was a lot of, uh, thought that went into that in design. Um, from Michelle Revers and the artist.
Artist name eludes me right now. Then at our the main construction at the Public Works Yard, which is the, the big ticket item, is still waiting for the switching material. It's supposed to be unloaded this week and then it's a, a time lag, probably a month before we can move into it. And there is a, a few other things that are going on with some windows. But change orders are going to be installed in the main shop and the office area upstairs. Moklis is working with that in engineering. And myself and what else we got? Don't think much else other than the airport lighting is basically completed other than there's two lights that are on apron, two yellow lights that aren't, they're backordered and they should be installed in the next few days. But other than that, then Matt, the bulk of the work is completed now. So we can get, get that one off the table. I guess that's about it. Any questions?
Anybody got anything? No? Good report. Thank you. Before we move on, I just actually want to take a second and thank all of you directors for those reports. So it was really, I, I really liked the way they were distributed. Also liked the presentations. That was really good and, and I, I look forward to them going forward. Okay, so that brings us to the end of the agenda. We're adjourned. Thank you.